Town of Kyoto, regular council meeting, January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at six o'clock P M. Call order, call roll.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number three, please. And number four, discuss about the approval of minutes for December twenty twenty-two.
I say. Huckabee?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number five, discuss about the approval of December twenty twenty-two, December twenty twenty-two bills for general fund.
I'm going to move through the bills for December twenty-two from the general funds.
A second. Huckabee?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number seven, discuss about the approval of December twenty twenty-two bills for street and alley fund.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Number seven, discuss about the approval of December twenty twenty-two bills for private apartment fund.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
Number eight, discuss about the resolve the dog issue.
Who's all here for the dog problem?
Who's all here for the dog problem?
I guess you could say she is too because they kind of two dogs come in your yard and they're like that's a lot. I don't know if it's same dog.
It don't matter if it's the same dog.
No, I don't. It's just any dog at large.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand when a dog gets out. My dog gets out by accident. I put my dog back away, but I keep an eye on my dogs. I, you know, that stuff happens, but it's the dogs that are running loose every single day and it doesn't matter. Officers will go down and write a ticket to them. Does not matter. They're out the, they're, they're basically back out, running loose before they can return up here.
I reported a dog last night. The lady got a ticket. The dog was back in my yard this morning. They're not caring about the tickets.
My house all the time.
Yes, and they, and, and these dogs, I've had dogs in my yard that they're tearing each other up.
Well, these growled her in her own yard, two dogs.
I was told by the cop, if they growled at you in your yard, you have the right to smoke them.
Yeah, but nobody wants to do that.
I mean, I understand, but to keep from getting bit, you'd rather get bit than kill a dog, not to me. I feel threatened in my yard. I'm gonna kill a dog.
And then I know two dogs got, Keisha had come in and she couldn't get out of her vehicle.
Yeah, Gary got out of his vehicle and a dog was in our yard and he had, Gary, y'all know Gary cool. He does know how to shoot a gun, but he couldn't get his gun fast enough and he had to jump back in his truck.
She had to leave and just go drive around the blocks and stuff to let it go out.
So it is a dog, dog issue and I, I'm gonna say that I've been coming to these council meetings for, I don't know, four, five years now. And there is probably, I think I counted, they could come up here and count one evening. There is thirty-one times, so there's one meeting twelve months, twelve meetings a year in five years, so it's sixty meetings. But I counted thirty-one times we put the dog issue on the agenda with no action, no resolution. And what is coming out as the problem is that they have an ordinance. And, and I see this because I'm up here as a finance person, they have an ordinance, but whenever they go after the owner of the dog, that person starts calling their friend and then those friends call, oh, you're mean to her, she can't afford that fine. And then they're, they, that's what they hear, that's the, that's the loudest voice that they hear. And so they don't really have the support of the town to resolve the dog issue because they're, the town is listening to people crying about the fines. And they call in the council members. So, and I, and I, I've kind of mentioned this, so you've got thirty-one times. So let's say my child gets hurt, that I would, my child gets hurt. Y'all know what an injury lawyer is. He's on T V and he's going to sue where he gets the money. He's gonna go after the owner, but then he's gonna come after the town. And he's gonna put in front of the jury, thirty-one times they couldn't resolve the issue. That's, they've had this many complaints and it's all open record, this many complaints to the police, this many times the police, and they've got all these videos. And the city is gonna, I mean, are they responsible for the dogs? No. But there has got to be some liability that the city has for not resolving the issue. It's not likely to run into a pothole because you have a choice to avoid the pothole. This, you don't have a choice if that dog comes after you and attacks you and attacks your kid. In Louisiana, just last week, a seven-year-old was playing out in her grandparents' yard in Louisiana and a dog that wasn't even theirs. Wasn't even theirs, came running down the street and he killed her. Wasn't even her dog, wasn't the family's dog, she was just out in her yard. Well, I care about this town and it's my tax money and I want to tell you that even though the city's not responsible for the dogs, I'm telling you that injury lawyer is gonna go after this city when he owns it.
He probably will not based on the fact that they do have ordinances, they've done everything they can legally. They can't really go after, I had the same circumstances, but I'm in Illinois, we did not, the city was not responsible as the owner. They have ordinances, they've got.
I'm not choice even towards the same time.
Except that the problem I see for the city is they have ordinances, but they're not implementing them. They're allowed to give three tickets, they're, they're for the dogs, but they're not giving them.
They're not giving them tickets.
Because that's what I'm saying is that we got too many people, people complaining that we've hurt somebody's feelings.
Usually they say it's not their dog.
Well, you can't control that, but are, okay, but are you the ones that issue the tickets when you refine the dogs? So you do do this.
Yes.
So they are implementing the, what they have, and I'm not, I'm, I'm with you guys one hundred percent, but we want you to do this correctly. I, I was looking at the fact that we used to have a dog catcher. We used to do this and I know that, I don't know what our finances are compared to things, but back then it was horrible and we still had a dog catcher. But it's not that, it's not, I mean, even if we had money, it's, it's the regulations of keeping the dog pound now. You just, before, all we needed was a fenced with a roof over it. Now it's air-conditioned heating inside, all, everything has to be, got to be par. I get that. What I'm trying to say is, how can we, what can we do to not just find them, but to actually take the dog? Force them to pay the fees? We can take the dog. We can take the dog right now.
We ain't no place to put it.
Well, that, how can you take the dog? First one's a warning, second one's a ticket, third one is put down. It is in there. It is in there. Okay, if that is options, then we need to enforce them. Okay. And then we're gonna fall into the person, the fallen person that loves dogs.
Then you're gonna have.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that, she has not, she keeps her dog pinned up.
I love dogs too.
And people are gonna say that's mean. I mean, it's not the dog's fault, it's the owners.
Well, mine's in the house, so.
They don't have the support, the council members don't have the support to go take that dog on a third time and follow the law.
I've been hollering that, put him down. And I'm a dog lover. I have dogs. But if the owner can't take care of us, we have nowhere to put them.
Then they can't sit and die in a mean way.
What's that to do?
Put him down, kill him off.
Well, it's my dog. Okay, and then we're, okay, not, I'm just showing you, because I'm sure you know I back you, back you on this because I know it's a problem, but I'm sick of it too. We can take the dog, put down. What's gonna happen here in two or three months? That person that we put the dog down. But was, what was she or he doing?
Get it out of there. Because they, the way they took care of the first dog, the way they're gonna take care of the dog, they replaced that dog with.
Well, sure. I'm just saying. You'll never, it's a never-ending thing, but in the same token, we're still to lenient. If we do not enforce the ordinances that we have, if this is the possibility, if this person knows, like you know, I'm gonna take your, I'm just pointing at anybody, I don't really. You got, you know, you get another one, it happens again, you're gonna lose another dog. Do you really want to do this? Do you want to keep doing that? You know, we're gonna enforce what's on your given ordinances?
Man, these people, I don't know, they, they pay fines out.
You take the dog and they'll have another one the next day.
My theory is, find them, take them. You can't just find them. If you gotta, you gotta put the dog down, maybe we need to pick the owner up.
Don't matter how many dogs you take. They'll get one the very next day.
And put them in jail.
You take that one, then we get one the very next day.
And think about, well, maybe I don't keep that dog as bad.
And then you're still, it's never gonna happen.
Well, up the thought you.
People that does not need dogs.
So Tammy's got something here.
The people that don't need dogs do it all the time.
I don't know what you're doing, but I've got to say.
I got right down here, got twenty dogs in its yard. Half of them are little pups.
Because there's, nobody's fixing.
Why would you need that many dogs? They all run free.
So can it be considered animal cruelty under the new felony law if they're letting their dogs run loose and not taking care of their dogs? And they could, and they could be arrested for felony.
That is a felony charge.
That's the new law.
Maybe they need to start enforcing it.
No, it was, it's been a law a long time ago.
If I can drive down that road and I have to talk to puppies.
Okay, well, it is a felony.
Yeah, it's worse. It's a felony.
And it don't go away.
Is that something that the law can enforce? Hey, you're gonna get a ticket for a felony of human, of animal endangerment because you're letting them have the chance to get run over and you're not taking care of your dog? Is that a possibility to charge them with animal endangerment? And it be a felony? And a felony will be handled out of district court, though, right?
They tear up everything in my yard, my entire yard, tear it up.
I wouldn't wanna live where you live.
I wouldn't wanna live, but, well, I do live, but they don't come up on my house.
And also, I can tell you that the dogs that were in my house are fighting, they're running as a pack.
They are up there on my hill.
And then Leanne's here and she knows the dog, they're, they're running as a pack. And what that means is that these dogs have gotten together and they've picked an alpha male. And that happens when the human isn't in charge of their dog. And so when they run as a pack, you're almost at the point you cannot neuter them, you cannot spay, whatever that's called. You can't cut them off at the knees and fix them.
Yeah, there's no help for them.
We need both spay and neutering because the females, if they're in heat, that the dog's gonna go insane as well if they're both fixed. So spay and neutering is necessary for both females.
But even when they form that back, that pack and they've got an alpha male, you're done. They're, they're, you can't hardly, once they're older, you can't take charge of them. And we've got some of those that have owners that are now in a pack. And those are an issue for this town and those are, I mean, you hear the stories that an Edmund, a, a lady, an older lady walking down the street and she gets jumped by a pack of dogs or sitting in her yard doing her garden, they're, they're attacked.
And it's just not big dogs, little dogs that are attacking them too. I mean, it's just all, no matter what it is.
Right. So I don't want, I don't wanna, not that I do flowers, because y'all can look at my flower bed, but I don't wanna be doing my flower bed. I don't wanna do a flower bed and have my back to the street and next thing I know, I've got three or four dogs on top of me.
And you can't walk or anything.
You can't walk, your kids can't ride the bikes.
So, you know, we've discussed that this is an issue and we understand that the same people are gonna basically do this over and over again. And the, you know, we've come up with the solutions of taking a dog and putting them down or trying to fettle. So what do you, what do we guys want the council to do?
As a citizen, I want them to get every single ticket that they possibly can do, and I know there's three. So when you're handing one ticket out, and I want every single dog that's out there to get a ticket. So if the owner has three dogs out there, there's three times three, because we don't have very many dogs registered in this city. And they, and these dogs running around, they aren't registered. So there's a registration, there's a review, there's vaccination, there's the ordinance violation, and that's three tickets for every dog. And I want the police, and they're, they're, I'm gonna tell you, the police, and I'm not talking about this police, I'm, I'm talking about police in general in the last four or five years. They get pressured by people as well. They really should be able to decide if that dog, if that owner needs a ticket, they shouldn't be under the pressure that, hey, that person called me and I really like their dog and their dog's not that bad.
But they'll go out there, but I'm, I'm, but like, they will go there, I might tell Leah, that dog belongs to you.
Right.
And then when Leah gets there, that's not my dog.
Yeah.
That's not my dog. And we all know it's that person's dog.
Right.
And so. You see, then you, see, then you means that I can have the dog removed and destroyed, is that what you're telling me? So then if they, yes, then, then they just basically. Okay, so who do we get to do that?
They'll say, oh.
Well, I'm gonna add on to your thing.
Because it's not up to these, these are not dog catchers. Okay.
Here's, I wanna add on.
There ain't no, none of them dogs wearing collars. That means they hadn't been vaccinated or they'd have a tag on them.
So I wanna add on to what you just said. I wanna add.
Well, like I said, I'm not gonna stick up for the dog, but I don't, if my dog doesn't have a collar, because I don't want it to hang itself on a door.
I wanna add on to what you just said.
That's why, well, people don't put collars on their dogs, but go ahead.
My dog got chapped on the collar.
Okay, you said they tell you that after all.
I expect a call.
So if I roll the store and I tell you, I didn't do it, are you gonna give me a ticket? Well, yeah, you're gonna wait.
A ticket when I get home.
So I don't, if they know that that dog's been at that house because it's been chained up, give them a ticket and they can come to court.
One time.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just saying that, that this is a big problem. That's what you say. You say it's not my dog and then you say, well, then I guess I'll contact someone if I can and if I have it removed. Then they'll, they may say, okay, and then, yeah, and then.
Because I don't think you're gonna do it. I don't think you're gonna do it.
That's the problem. We have to back ourselves up. We've got to do it. So we gotta figure out how, I seriously, even if you take the dogs and even like they say, they get another one, how long ago would it take for them to get another one? And you keep taking it. Eventually they're like, well, yeah, you know, I guess I better not do it.
But that's what I'm saying is if you've seen that dog at their house before and you've seen it chained up, and here's the law. If you feed a stray or you give the stray a bed, you are liable as an owner at that point. Whether that dog was yours, it's yours. So if they've seen you feed it and they know it's there and they see, like the little red pointed ears that Felicia says not here? I've seen it tied up to her tree. But if they know that, they need to give them a kit.
Did you tell me the name of the dog too, Scooby? But it's not hers.
Oh. But she's had tied up to her tree. So that would be her taking in a stray and, yeah, don't do that. She should have tied up to her tree because she's actually getting her name attached to that dog. But what I'm saying is that as the police, they can give them the ticket and then let them come before a judge and explain to the judge, hey, that's not mine. And he can say, well, let's go take this and go to a trial and then let's see what they do. I mean, when somebody commits a crime, what's the first thing they tell the police? It wasn't me. And it doesn't stop the investigation. It doesn't stop them from getting arrested. So just because they say it's not mine and I'm not the owner, you're gonna give them a ticket and they need to come talk to the judge.
You basically, it's like getting a new ticket for speeding. It really is. If you're speeding, you've gotta now go to court and prove that you.
And how many times when you're, how many times once have y'all heard when they're speeding? I wasn't speeding.
I say it all the time. No, I'm just saying, it's one of those things that you're always going to have to do that. So when you walk up and I'm like, this is your dog? No, it's not. Well, I have evidence that you, or I have seen it in your yard, you have fed it, we have now, it's your dog, I'm giving you this ticket. Okay, you gotta report to court on this thing.
Right.
Okay. Please take your dog in because it is not, or chained it or something where it's not free. Because if it hasn't done it right now in front of me, I'm gonna give you another citation just because it's still free. I still like my idea, put them in behind jail. Yeah, well, put the owner, if you can find that person.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Because if you're not, if you're in jail for my dog. That dog isn't taken care of. Because the dog's been locked up inside the house.
But they, then they get them for felony for animal endangerment.
They go to jail.
They do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I know, I know my person that got it. Where you can now make it, you know, you're showing you're the ownership, okay? You fed it, you got cheeks to your tree, so how?
Yeah, like rent one of yours, he was chained to the tree.
That dog doesn't have a tab, it's been, I mean, I suppose. Okay, here's your ticket. I see the dog on the street again, I'm coming to you because I know it's your dog, I've got evidence. That's the second one. Third ticket, we're going for, and to name.
Right. And, and, and now I'm not, it's a charge of with that felony of animal thing, I don't, I mean, we can wait one or two tickets later. But right now we're giving them tickets and we got them calling people and crying and then they called our friends and then the friends called, not just, when I say council, it's in the past five years. It's not these people, it's not this police, but then they called the council, no matter who's on council, oh, I can't afford that ticket, my dog.
And they're driving by the people that complained.
And so the people like us.
They're driving by the people that complained.
Right.
That George went down there and talked to.
Yeah.
Back and forth in front of that person's house.
Right. So they are, they're, they're not, they're just not caring. I mean, they're paying the tickets and, well, they're not paying the tickets, they're getting, and that's the other thing that's on the agenda, is someone needs to talk to the judge and say, twenty dollars a month payments is not good enough. We gotta have the money to pay our dog catcher.
We gotta pay the dog catcher and we also gotta make it, okay, it's not a big deal, I'll pay twenty dollars a month. You gotta make it a big deal where they can't afford it. You cannot do that. We don't want twenty.
Well, that's the judge that did that on.
No, no, this, where it says, you know, you need to make this minimum.
No grant for a, a shelter? We can't get a grant for a shelter?
I've looked. It's a little tricky when it comes to that. This is, you guys, you know that ballot. Remember last year, when I first got on the board, it was one of my beefs. And I've looked and looked and looked for some kind of grant, they all know this, me and, well, Doug, me and Doug both were trying to go after it left and right.
Well, I know.
Doug was right behind me, or right, right behind Doug, one of the two. And there's nothing there for that problem. I don't understand why they don't put that because there's so many small towns that have this dog issue that cannot afford to have a dog pound or take care of, you know, a dog. Unearthed, what is it, the, the, what you see on the commercials all the time, wanting donations for the, they show.
She has.
The rescue dogs. The rescue, oh, well, you know what I'm talking about, A C, you know what I'm talking about?
A C P.
They always show them like that.
Right. So if any way to contact them to see what they, what recommendations they have when we have this kind of problem? Because if you're gonna help other people, why can't you help out us? And then we can spread the word to the other small towns. But honestly, I, I'm not trying to be a poop head, but they've done what they can with what resources they have. The idea of asking the judge not to give them that much leniency, the other option is taking the dog. And how can they do that without a dog catcher? That's why I'm asking, what is the resources?
I think we need a dog catcher. I'm sorry.
What is the resources? Okay, all right, I agree, I agree, I agree with you guys on the dog catcher. I've been hollering that too. Okay, so we go out there and catch other dogs.
What are you gonna do?
And say like, this, this dog's not vicious, it's just a loving dog, it's just running loose. What do you want us to do with the dog once we have possession of it?
Where can we put them?
Where can we put them? That's what Chubbs all, that's what you guys told me, all this time when I've been hollering.
So we need both, dog catcher and a place to film.
So this town.
And we go back to the building, air-conditioning regulations.
Can you work with another town?
There has to be somebody there too.
This town has had two dog catchers. The first dog catcher, wah wah wah, cry 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 cry, they fired the dog catcher. Then they had another dog catcher, wah wah wah, wah wah wah, they, the council followed the dog catcher. Dog catchers got fired twice because people crawling up here and crying because their little doggy is gone. And then the rest of the people that don't want the little doggy around, they stay home. But, so we fired two dog catchers just because people calling and whining about their dog.
Yeah, I know, actually we got rid of one of them because he wasn't doing his job.
And we got rid of one because she started flashing the badge to him, to the cop.
She was a cop.
But you, but you had many people calling you, I would tell you that.
She was selling the dogs on, uh, the computer, on whatever.
Well, I, yeah, I know that there was one person said they stole it on the fence, but you don't know. I mean, I don't know how many times we listen, oh, that my dog was on the side of the fence, but you don't have any proof.
I think that we have a strong enough council and if we can get a strong enough person, you're gonna get complaint, no matter what you're gonna do.
But you guys have got to stand up to it and not worry about, there are a bunch of people that want the dogs taken care of and you guys have got to just not worry about the whiners and the criers.
No, I ain't worried about it.
I ain't worried either. I'm just, you know, you're pretty strong and it's like you need to say, you know, I'm sorry, I was your dog loose, well, I can't help you. And then, I'm sorry, I have to end this conversation, have a great day. In the conversation, don't engage. It's like, I'm sorry, I can't help you. Once your dog has been in, in prison, you've gotta take care of the business and, and don't let it go free. That's the problem is, it's, you don't want to hurt anybody, but you sometimes have to. I don't care, do we really? Sometimes you.
Yeah, but I'm talking about in general councils before in general. They care about the little person calling and crying and that has been a case in the past. But to go back and if we charge fines, they should pay for the kennel that that dog is in. So you know how we have jail fees? Well, the doggy's gonna have jail fees and they should not get payment arrangements on that jail fee. That fee is paid right then and there in order so we can pay our bills.
Well, I'm gonna get your dog. You want your dog, you gotta pay the fee.
You gotta pay the fees that we cost us in food and housing and, and everything else and you don't get your dogs.
Well, if you put them in jail, it's like fifty-five dollars a day for that person in a jail.
And, and, and the rule is in most cities that if you don't pick up that dog in three days, he's using us.
Right.
Because Stigler does, and I'm with the rescue.
Okay, okay.
We, it's me and one other girl are the two main. We have a few that will foster here and there for us. Just in the last year, we've took a hundred and seven dogs just from Kyoto. Like the aggressive dogs that she has posted videos of, we won't take aggressive dogs. When we get them, they go straight to the vet and we have to have them euthanized. We can't, we can't put people at risk, you know, because we, when we get the dogs, we submit them to a, a bigger state and we ship them off, you know. Actually, right now I have fourteen dogs and eight of them are from Kyoto. And I'm getting a litter of eight puppies tomorrow night from Kyoto. And I, I've helped, I've helped her, I mean, I've helped. I've tried to do all that I can to help. Um, as far as the problem, until, if y'all can get a dog catcher, if y'all can get the pens feasible to where nothing can get out of them, I can help take care of them. When they're in the pens for three days, this is how, the people have three days, owners have three days, seventy-two hours to claim them. If they don't claim them, we'll move them to our pens as soon as we have room. If they're aggressive, they have to be straight taken to the vet to be euthanized. But now we're a nonprofit, so everything that we do is like donations from the town and we don't get a lot of that. So, you know, ninety percent of it is out of our pocket. We've, we've actually spayed and neutered thirty-one dogs in the last three weeks. Not all from Kyoto, but, you know, Kyoto, Stigler, Enterprise and McCurtin are our four main places that they come from. So, I mean, I could help, I, I mean, I have a full-time job, so I'm not gonna be available to be like a dog catcher. But I can come help, you know, get dogs, I can help, you know, if they need to be taken to the vet to euthanize, I can do that. I can do just about anything like that.
And they wouldn't have to be put down, like, you could foster them.
We don't put, unless they're aggressive to humans or other dogs, we do not put ours down. I mean, we, in, in the, this whole last year, we saved a total of three hundred and fifty-four dogs and fifty-seven cats. So, and that were not euthanized. That's just what we've taken in, me and this other girl, and we have fostered between both of us through the year.
So if we had kennels, we would still be providing the food and the water, but y'all would come out and help feed them and water them.
Yes, and which, like she said, for them to come claim their dogs, they have to pay the fee. They can't take their dog until it's free. And they have to provide vaccination records. If they don't have them, like I can give it to them, but they're gonna have to pay for it. You know, I mean, it wouldn't be what a vet charges, but we vaccinate all of our dogs that we get in ourselves.
But the town could approve for this help to get a donation. We could probably approve for them to get something every month from the town.
So you can't, I, I mean, how, how you do that donation from the town? How does that process work? I mean, how can we do that for them, is what I'm saying, I don't.
Well, we, like, like with us, we have a cash app set up, we have Facebook Pay set up, we have a mailing address.
Can the town do that?
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Can the town do that or can a, a practicing one can do quick, can it stand with? That's where I'm trying to, yeah.
I mean, we're, we have a five-on-one number, like we're all looking, we have a lot of paperwork and everything.
You don't wanna talk about those.
Yeah, it has to come from the general fund.
Yeah.
But that's, that's how it's allowed to donate?
It would come out of the dog account.
Yes, okay.
The dog account that's, that's never been.
So I'm, I'm the finance person, dog, and Tammy told me that a dog account, chicken account was approved, which I wasn't aware of. So that dog chicken account got to be set up.
So all the fines, these bills.
All the fines.
Excess, there is a percentage that goes to the police officer because the other ten percent right now.
And we haven't been doing that because I wasn't where a dog checking account was set up and she had set the checking account up.
Yeah, we had a checking account two years ago.
But it wouldn't do no good to open that account if you don't write the tickets.
I can go all of that two years and move those fines over that account. So that's the account that pays them.
So basically, we can't enable it as a service. We have to make it as a donation to her.
A nonprofit.
Right. See, that's where I'm trying to, how do we do that?
Right.
You guys take dog food and everything, right? I mean, basically.
Oh, yeah, we take whatever we can get.
Yeah. But we still gotta figure out how the, that city can do that.
But what we're saying is, is that what would it come from? It's them charging the fines to the people.
Right. But how do we legally do a donation as a city? I mean, I can donate her. Because she's.
She's all coming, she's all coming out of the sales tax money.
She's saying she, that she's gonna move those dogs down to you eventually.
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours.
What the city would hold them.
So. That's not, I get all that, but what I'm trying to say, can the city do a donation? She can't, she can't set, have, be a service.
Yeah.
You see where I'm going at?
You're talking about like a memorandum of understanding, some sort of contract between.
Right. How do they do this where they can keep their nonprofit and we can give them money to help them?
That's something to take to Joey.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I, I, I'm thinking it's a good idea, but we need to know if the city can do that or if it has to be. Like I said, I can do a donation, she's not gonna donate it for me, fifty bucks, you got it. Like I said, I can do a donation, she's not gonna donate it for me, fifty bucks, you got it. But can a city do that?
Yeah, see, I don't know, cause my rescue partner, she actually works at City Hall in Stigler, so when the pound dogs come in there. Um, the city of Stigler, you know, they provide the dog food, they provide the shelter. She doesn't get paid, but they do have a dog catcher, you know, that gets paid. But, um, so, for the seventy-two hours that they're on hold, the city is the one providing. And if it's, um, within that seventy-two hours, we determine that they have to be euthanized for whatever reason, the city has to pay for that.
Okay, but you're not, they're not paying you anything.
No, no, they're, they're paying that.
I'm trying to figure out how to help you do.
No, the actual city is not paying us anything.
Yeah, that's where I'm wondering, if the city can do it, or if we get it set up to where it's like that, like instead of where they have a facility and you just kinda help out that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to.
So that's, that's one option, is that we have kennels and we get help from them. But I still think we need a dog catcher, and, and we've talked about money in this before. So, I figure that in the first week we have a dog catcher, all the dogs are gonna be in the houses. Then I think they're gonna get a little bit more relaxed, so I bet you're gonna have a couple of months there that your dog catcher's gonna be out catching a lot of dogs. And then, I think you're gonna have a time that there ain't gonna be as many dogs to catch, and then they're gonna get relaxed and the dogs are gonna start. So I don't think you're going to have a lot, it's not gonna be every month of a lot of dogs. Because the people are gonna start moving their dogs in and out of their house based on when they think their dog catcher's active. So, um, and I know we have, I don't even know how much a dog, a dog catcher costs, I don't even know where you go find a dog catcher. But it's not a job I would ever do, that's for sure.
I guess it's an hourly wage of who can be able to.
So, that is something that, um.
I do it for free every day.
So I think on the dog catcher, I think that the city is gonna have to afford a dog catcher. Because you can't get rid of the dogs, cause you can't have your street and alley dog catching, you guys, cause you've got workers' comp problems then.
Yes.
And your police can't go be catching dogs because you have a situation there, so I don't think.
And you can't get the council to do it, do it, because I did it once and I got bit, and I won't do it again.
Yeah, so, so you've gotta have somebody, you've gotta have a dog catcher that has their own liability insurance to cover them if they get bit. And that doesn't need to be John Doe across the street, he needs to give us an insurance certificate.
So basically, this person will not be a part of the city, they would be a complete and general.
And they have their own insurance to cover their, but.
I got what you're saying, they're hiring a service, not a person, yes.
Right, so I think this town is gonna have to get a dog catcher, I mean. Not unless anybody else in here wants to volunteer to catch these dogs and put them in their cars, I ain't coming over here. So, I just, I, I think you're gonna have, you're gonna have to do it.
Well Cheryl, if they'll come up and mine in your yard and, you know, we know it'd be on guard. But think of those school kids that are right there, walking this way unaware, and.
And some of them try to pet them.
No, one with the red one ears, me and George saw it chasing two kids while you were up at my house.
They're gonna have to be put down, they're not gonna be able to be rehabilitated.
There's just no way.
We're not that kind of deal, we can't, we can't do it. So, again, now we've got somewhat of a solution, which, you know, see, you know, finding a. A contractor that could do this without being part of the city, so.
Dog catcher, her help.
So do we have the facility is the next thing.
We'd have to build a killing, you know. So if you guys want, you, you guys have got that money sitting over for the use tax, I mean, we're using it for other little things. And as a citizen paying taxes, that's sitting over there. And I don't know, I think you need to, you approve a project to build those kennels out of that money. Because we've used it for lesser needed stuff than what this is. I mean, I'm just giving you my citizen.
But it has to be air conditioned heating.
Is that a law?
You're gonna have a building.
It has to be certain walls in it.
But you're on a list for days, you're not a head store.
We have a quarrel a lot too with their intake, and for years, all they had was outdoor kennels. Now, uh, about the last six months, they have built on to the back of the kennels, you know, where the dogs can come in and out. Out of the shelf, you know, out of the rain, but they can still go outside in the cages.
Let the Davis building and had kennels on the outside so they can go in and out there.
But the, the Davis building won't work, it has to be structured by so much.
I think you need to have Joy research that.
Yes, I'm just saying.
You're talking about seventy-two hours.
This is what someone told me.
But they may have been referring to that we're gonna keep these dogs long.
And I had to have air conditioned heater.
Spiro, they don't even have no buildings for them now.
See, why, why is that one person?
Because you're talking about, so the person that talked to you, Tammy, may have been talking about keeping the dogs long term, we're talking about keeping them for three days.
Yeah.
Cause I'm just saying, that's what I, that's why.
It sounds like a structure, even if I had a trailer, I couldn't have a dog according to their.
Small town, I think it'd be bad.
Yeah, but you, you're keeping your own dog.
Yeah, but still, I mean, would they gonna find me for me?
So I think it's a difference, we're keeping for three days, I bet our requirements are less than somebody who's actually in the business to keep dogs, you know.
Not readers, it's not a reader.
So I think we need to talk to Joy. And, um.
We'll find out from Joy.
Yeah, and so that, so got kennels, and I, and you guys have gotta vote after you're here for this town. But kennels and dog catcher, talk to Joy about the dog kennel situation, and what was the other thing to talk to Joy about?
See, we can put that person in jail.
Yeah, see if you can, uh, charge them with that felony of endangering your dogs. Cruelty to animals. So now, it's coming from the citizens, and I'm up here the citizen right now, not a fin- an author finance person. Um, let's talk about the fines.
Yeah, let's talk about those fines.
So. Number eight.
Table this.
That's why.
Yeah, we get, we talk to Joy about it, oh, we can't discuss.
Can y'all come back in a special meeting, cause this is what always happens, y'all table it and come back, not y'all, but council members table it, and the next thing we know, we're leaving and we still got a dog issue.
Well, we can't vote on saying that we're going to, to build a kennel, or we're not, can't vote.
Talk to Joy, are we gonna continue to add it as an agenda item next month, go another four weeks?
No, not another four weeks.
I know, that's the reason, if you guys table it, you're table it till the next meeting.
Thing is, it's discussed and voted.
Y'all gonna go talk to Joy and then call a special meeting.
The thing is, you should've said discuss, it has end vote, so that needs to be amended, if we're not voting for anything. Uh, discuss and then vote, and then if you wanna put in the next agenda, like she says, if she wants to hurry it, special meeting could be possible.
Yeah, cause this is something been going all week, table it, we table it, we table it, we table it, so you're thinking about adding it for another four weeks, and I can't last another four weeks on my corner.
I gotta last another four weeks.
So.
Special meeting.
You're gonna have to do a special meeting, you have to talk to Joy and then have a special meeting. And I'm, like I said, I'm here as a citizen, not a finance person.
I understand, and I'm, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad everyone's here.
Not just my work, but I, we need to be all special meetings, it's work, you know.
But that's the hard part, yeah, getting one done.
Huh?
Getting one done while y'all work, getting one.
No, I'll be at work.
I'll probably be gone.
Well, can y'all vote, can y'all vote to have a special meeting where y'all get to call in?
Well, there'll still be three of us here.
Three can be done, so.
Yeah.
And then he can tell you.
I'll be gone out of state.
Tell you what's going on, so. Yeah, we need to talk to her first before we do anything on the resolution.
But as a town, we've told you what we want.
We can call a special meeting on that, too.
You guys have heard from the town, kinda what we're looking at, so.
So we'll amend that vote out of this, number eight.
Well, it's already where, there's a, I don't remember whether it's ordinance or whether it was state law. If a, if dog growls at you or is aggressive towards you, uh, then they have to take it out of town right now.
Well, there's no seventy-two hours on it, is what he's saying, so if it's a vicious dog, it's immediate taking and then euthanizing without any wait.
I'm good with it.
Well, I mean, yes.
Yeah, if it's a vicious dog, I mean, it shouldn't even be down.
Well, when it was growling and saw that fight and that stuff, I yelled, put it down.
So we're gonna do, are you going to? Could you say you need to vote on a resolution, which you don't, you're not going to? Should it should've just said discuss and then?
There's no action.
No action, uh, for a special meeting, that's what we're gonna have to do.
Yep.
Cause do the, you know, have a talk to Joy.
So no action on number eight?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll just do a special meeting when we talk to Joy.
When you do no action, it's gonna come up on the next meeting or?
Special meeting.
Well, we'll have to re-put it on there, because we didn't take no action on it, and we'll have to re-write it like we're starting it again, basically.
And the warning would be, if you wouldn't, just keep it away to do a vote on it, well.
Bring, discuss and take appropriate action.
So, I'm, I'm one of the more looking at that.
We always write, I, we always write it that way, though, we share it, we always put, discuss and vote. We always, if you even look at all of ours, it just says that, it's been that way for years, you know?
I know, but I'm just saying.
So I guess we just all go through all these years.
Right, number nine, we're gonna discuss a vote, or discuss and vote to increase fines for violations of dog ordinances.
And we did vote for four y'all's time, I think, that you get, the first time it's this amount, the second time it's this amount. So y'all did do an increase and didn't help, I mean, it didn't fix it, but there's three tickets, right? There's letting your dog run at large, no rabies, and not register with the city. Cause actually, the ones registered to the city are on around, it's, so there's those three things. And it's every dog, so if that person has four dogs out, it's three times four. And, and I'm not talking about these places here, so I'm saying places in general, the last five years. Have received pressure to not give tickets or to not do all the tickets or to be nice. And I think that pressure needs to stop.
And no more nights.
We can't stop the pressure, Ron, I'm gonna say, we can't stop the pressure, cause it's gonna be, but we need to be strong.
Well, no, they, they don't, they don't take care of the dog, the same person's letting that dog back out.
We, yeah, we need the police to have support of the council and of the citizens that they're gonna be able to do their job. And they, their job is to give those fines out to those people.
Don't they have our assistance?
I'm talking about in general, I've seen in the past five years where police have been pressured to maybe, maybe not give this person a fine. They might be fineing this person over here, but they may not be giving this person a fine.
About certain people, kind of getting them in.
And we need to just kinda not.
Treat them, can't treat them all the same.
I agree, so I think that they need to know that they have the town's support and the council's support. And that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying it's this town or these people or this council, I'm just saying, in general, this meeting, we need to say, we support you. To do your job within the law that you have.
What is, what is the fines right now?
What are they?
The hundred fifty.
What's the hundred fifty?
The last one, that's the third one, ain't it?
The vaccination, I think, is like two hundred, three hundred, and the city tag is about the same, maybe a little bit more.
But, but the, uh, the rabies is more, the most expensive one, how much is it, is that five hundred?
I don't remember being that high.
I think it's five hundred.
It's pretty, it's ever pretty high.
You need to pull that, uh.
Yeah, you need to pull the first time and the second time.
I just don't, I thought it was two hundred, I thought it was five hundred total for a dog.
No, when Art was here, he said he could write at least fifteen hundred for one dog if he really wanted, if he really, if he really wanted to do it.
I know about a month ago, that if a woman got a thousand dollars, would take each other one dollar.
Okay, she's telling us.
The vaccination for rabies.
It's two hundred.
Two hundred, is that the first, is there a second offense on?
The voter have a city dog tag is a hundred.
Hundred, okay.
A hundred.
And what large, you start off with a hundred, and then you'll go all the way to a hundred.
A hundred fifty.
Maybe what?
Three shots on that.
So basically, two hundred dollars right off the bat.
And it goes up a few dollars if you do a second offense, but there's no escalation to a third offense.
In the books that's not on a fine card or?
First offense, turn twenty-five to the same, and a hundred fifty is the third.
Because.
But they can pay twenty bucks and none of this.
Right.
Then if I keep going to them over and over, it's a hundred fifty every time.
Well, I'd hate to have one of my grandkids get bit by a dog and don't know if he had shots and had to have taken those rabies shots on my kids.
And it's been your grandkids, it's you chase this cat.
That's two hundred dollars.
I live by the elevator and, uh, people likes to dump animals down there, that's their favorite place. And, uh, back several years ago, people were doing that, and like the little female dogs and stuff. With the male dogs, they would fight over them. I don't own any dogs, but we couldn't hardly get in, in and out of our house. The dogs would be fighting, and my son almost got bit, and all he was doing is trying to get in the house. And I said, that's pretty bad, you know, but we had that problem.
Yeah, I know it's down there, my sister can't walk, or she can't take a walk around the block because the dogs are attacking her.
No.
You can, you can get on a leash, on a walk.
I'm ready to take mine out for a walk, cause I'm afraid they'll. Go by, go care about my house. Well, not, don't, just don't go by the other house.
Or go to your yard and do your, I mean, you shouldn't be able to go to your yard.
Up there at my house. I just gotta say Bernard, it's a hundred and seventy pounds.
Um, okay, so what is it?
You don't, no dogs can move there.
Are we going to increase fines?
Yeah, it needs to be, is there a set price so we don't get in trouble, like, you can't just, you just can't say, okay, let's do a thousand? Five hundred, which one? That's what we need, I want the max. I want the max. If we, if I can get everybody else to, three other.
You might have to do another, add it to the agenda of the next one, do this one as well, because we don't, don't have that information to.
That's what she knows.
I think you can go maximum on all of five hundred.
Yep. Well, then let's just do it straight across.
I make a motion, we go to the maximum penalty on every fine per dog. It does make, if they got one dog or they got four dogs. They get a, a ticket, a fine for each and every dog.
Heck, well, also we need to do, also you need to work with, you also need to say, like, for the problem we have right now. That person got a ticket yesterday, and today the dog's running free again, and I had to send Leah back down there.
Well, I think they need a citation if they get the five hundred dollar maximum, then they need to go front of the judge on it.
That dog, they need to have another ticket written, just keep it right now.
I think, I think what they need to do is if they get that fifteen hundred dollars right off the bat, and they do it again, then they come to front of that judge. And say, why they got fifteen hundred dollars in the first place, and why deserve another one?
Because it won't do them, them no good to cry to me about their tickets. Not to Valma, not to Jeff.
Cause I keep my, I, I keep my dog in pen.
It might have been.
So you're saying go to the maximum after they hit the first time, the second time, the third time is maximum?
There's no adding, it's gonna be an accident from now.
And if they, if they need to do something, then maybe they can cry to the judge, but.
Yeah.
We're gonna see what we can do about that.
And they need to come to the judge and say, you know what, this is the first time my dog has been out, and I take good care of my dog, and you cry him through the hole, and let the dog reduce the fine.
But we all know that, we all know the dog, or the first times out, the dog. These are the same dogs everywhere down there in your area.
Yeah, there's one over here that I guarantee you, I've had fifty pups that he's bred dogs. That I have, I have four right now that are just from this one, so. Like every other month, I have a litter that came from the same dog.
So, they're gonna, we're gonna.
Maximum fine for each citation, each, for everything.
And burden?
Yes, my second.
Golf? Yes. Starsman?
Yes.
Performing? Did you say yes?
Yes, he did.
Yes.
And they have the option to go to the judge to reduce it.
Discuss and vote, number ten, discuss and vote on acceptable payment arrangements for violation of dog ordinance.
This is where the judge comes in.
This is where the judge comes in.
No, well, I don't, I can tell you everybody gets them bind on the very first ticket, but if they get that second ticket.
They continue.
That's it, because I, you know, anybody can get in a bind.
Pay and fold.
Pay and fold, but, uh.
I agree, first ticket, yeah.
To a point, not the, no, not, not the twenty dollars, but, anybody that doesn't have money, they do get binds. And they can't pay, they ain't gonna be able to pay it.
Because people's dogs do be out for the first time, hopefully that first time is not the first time they kill someone, but. I'm okay with it.
But the first time, okay, for instance, say like my dog got out, and you complained, just remember there's an ordinance in there. They get a warning, that's what you guys need to keep.
If they got a warning, then we'll be aware of what's gonna happen next.
Yeah, so they.
Yeah, but I'm just letting you know, when you said the first time when a dog gets out.
Oh, they get a warning, okay.
They get a warning.
But see, when they get to the judge and they have the fines, then they don't need to have any payments. It's like, you know, this is your warning, and you know, when you go to court, we're having, you will not make payments on this.
That's why you want to do that way too, I'm just letting you know, like.
And they would have got a warning. And they need to pay the jail.
The judge, the judge decides that.
I know, that's what we need to.
We can't tell him what to do, yeah, you can't.
We can suggest.
Yeah, we can suggest.
We, we can suggest.
Yeah, we need to let them know that if you.
Unless they wanna come in here and just pay it, then they can need to make up a cess- accessible payment arrangement.
What, 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 what we're just trying to say, Donna, is the twenty dollar tickets, or the, the two hundred dollar tickets, and the ten hundred dollar ticket, and then the judge sits there and says, well, you only have to pay twenty dollars a month because I can't afford another house.
Well, I, I agree with it, but he just wanna decide that.
I know, that's, we talked, we had that discussion, too.
Yeah, we can suggest it to him to make a little more.
The council can suggest to him on the payment plan, I will also tell you that he has also lifted up some things up to the police and Sharon to decide payment plans, but you council can tell the police and Sharon not to make the payment arrangements.
That's what he's, that's what he's talking about now, so if they choose not to do that, they're just gonna pay the fine.
He's saying, what would you suggest be the, uh, reasonable amount? So the fine is fifteen hundred dollars, so they need to pay twenty percent, fifty percent of the fine right now, and then.
They need to make more than twenty dollars, twenty dollars a month.
You know what I'm saying? But it's just not the dogs, it's not the dogs.
The dogs doing that on, I mean, there's other things too, that he does it on.
So like, that's what I'm saying, does it need to be a percentage, how you wanna give it, uh, uh, normally less than forty percent?
I don't know, I mean, can we even do that, suggest that, cause that's still a judge.
No, I'm talking about people that are coming in, I'm just gonna pay the fine without going to court.
Oh.
Right, so.
I mean, they gotta, they need to make more than twenty dollars on that payment.
They need to pay half, I said they need to pay half.
You guys can direct Sharon and the police, what they can give out is payment arrangements without going, so they have some flexibility to give out in a side payment.
They need to pay half.
You guys can tell Sharon, you can't make twenty dollar about the payment arrangements, it has to be this, y'all can dictate to them what they can and can't make. As for the judge, he does take the town's suggestions, he takes them all the time from Leah, and he takes them from Sharon. So, so you can tell Sharon.
Well, like Leah, Leah and Sharon can take, say, well, this is where, where you're gonna be done, you know.
So you can tell Sharon and Leah, here's what you have the authority to do payment arrangements on as it relates to dogs, and here's what you can come as a suggestion to the dog, to the judge on the town. Does the judge have to follow you? No, but Sharon and Leah do, because you guys.
But please don't know what the town is feeling, and therefore, he may take that into consideration when making these arrangements. But, uh, again, I'm, I'm beating you like, like a dead dog, or what, what are you gonna call a reasonable, a payment if they're not gonna go to court, they're gonna just pay the fine? So if they say, I don't have fifteen hundred, I.
They need to at least come up with a hundred anyway.
Uh, I say half, 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 half.
So you can say.
At least half anyway.
Okay, so fifty percent.
But only, it's, if it's the first offense, not the second one.
Right, this is what I'm talking about, generally, most of those regions, you come and try to pay it, and so if they do fifty percent of the fine, and so that's what I'm asking, so that's what you're gonna have is. And then, like that.
Do you guys agree with this? Cause she's not the only one sitting here making the difference.
I, I, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get something going.
So. So in that case, where they're just calling and paying the fines and not showing before the judge, you guys do control what that payment arrangement is, because it's Sharon and the police making the decision, it's not a judge.
They need to know what you're making.
So they need to know, what she's trying to say is, you need to tell Sharon and the police, you can do this when it comes to a dog ticket, because there's no judge involved in that payment arrangement, with they, if they call up, say, I'm gonna pay my fine, can I make a payment arrangement? They're making the decision, not the judge.
Yeah, well, you guys are the town, you guys are the town, I hear her voice, but you guys, you guys need to tell us what we need to do, too.
So y'all need to tell. I sign fifty percent. I'm fifty percent, cause I've seen some of these dog owners come here and drop the five hundred dollars and not show up for court.
I'm, I'm with whatever everybody wants, I'm with it.
And here's another reason, as a finance person, you guys are gonna have a kennel, you're gonna be feeding some dogs for three days, and that money needs to be used to pay for those dogs, and if you guys are taking a hundred dollars or twenty dollars, you're not building up your dog checking account in order to feed these dogs in the kennels. So you need to make it such that you can take care of what their problem is, I mean, cause you're gonna pick that dog up, the dog catcher. So you need to be getting enough money in that dog checking account to pay for your kennel and the food, and the help to get that taken care of, and to pay your dog catcher. So, so I think you're, I'm with, I'm, when she said fifty, whoever said fifty percent?
She said fifty, I'm okay with that, too, we just needed the numbers, so we get on.
I'm good with fifty. First time.
But I mean, I agree.
And you need to.
How you gonna determine whose dog that is?
Well, we've discussed that, is that if, if, there's some of these people say it's not their dog.
No one's gonna claim it if they got a fifteen hundred dollar bill.
Well, so.
But a lot of these dogs that we're talking about right now, if you know who the owners are.
So, but the other thing is, is that there's this law, if you feed the dog, this is state law, if you feed the dog, or you tie, or you give the dog a bed, you own the dog.
If you throw your scraps out there because you feel sorry for that dog, it's your dog.
If I'm facing for a fifteen hundred dollar fine, I don't care, I'm not gonna claim no dog.
Right, so, so here's. So here's.
Well, doesn't matter, if you throw your scraps out there because you feel, feel sorry for all the dogs.
They eat out of the dumpster at the community center down here all the time, turning them over, and no one claims them.
Yeah, so let me answer your question. So it's just something we talked about before you got here, is that everybody's gonna say that's not my dog, but if these police officers have seen that dog tied up in that yard, and they've seen that dog eating, they need to give the ticket, let that person come before the judge.
If he's tied up in the yard?
If he's, if they've seen him tied up in the yard.
Oh, okay, okay.
And if they know that they've got some witness that dog, and they know where that dog is sleeping out on the porch, they need to give the ticket to that owner, no matter what they say, and let that person come before the judge and convince it, because I'm gonna tell you, if somebody's feeding, how, yeah.
Because we have dogs come up and sleep in front of our house, and they're not my dogs.
But you're not giving it a bed, and you're not feeding it.
I'm not giving it a place to sleep.
Exactly, you're not giving it a blanket, you're not giving it food, or water.
Right.
But I've got stuff on my porch he sleeps on. That's what I'm saying, I mean, just because that stuff's on my porch, no way.
Okay, well, if it's a chair, it's gonna be different than if you have a cushion on the floor, where they lay down, if you got a chair that they're sitting on and sleeping on, that's not the same.
I'm gonna tell you what the last person said, what you just said, it was not their dog, and it, and that person got a ticket because of the dog.
Well, if they come up to my door and I feel threatened, I'm just gonna shoot it, cause I'm not paying fifteen hundred dollars for a dog that's not mine.
She had one dog, she had one dog, and the, one dog dropped the other dog in. Yes, she fed it, but it really wasn't her dog, it was a stray dog, and I really believe this person, she says, I felt sorry for her, but I don't want it,
I do, that's hard.
but I feed my dog, and that dog eats with my dog. And I told her, I said, the only way you're gonna do that is either find a home, fall to it, or take it away, because every time they catch, I mean, her dog is running free, too, though, every time.
Well, I ain't gonna change if you feed it, but if you're not feeding a dog, it just comes to sleep on your porch, like she said, you're housing a dog, I don't believe in that.
Well, I'll be front of town.
No, I'm not housing that dog because it comes to sleep on my porch.
Well, state law says that you, that you can be, I mean, that's in the state of Oklahoma law, it's not.
That is the state of Oklahoma law.
It's a state of Oklahoma law, that if you've got a dog that's at your house, they, they.
That's what I'm saying, if y'all are saying that, the next dog that comes to sleep on my porch, I'm just gonna shoot it, and I'm not gonna worry about it.
Because I'm just telling us, I mean, that's what the state of Oklahoma law says.
That's what y'all are coming to, I mean, that's the way y'all are saying to me, I'm not paying for a dog that's not mine.
Absolutely.
Simple as that, I'm not speaking my mind, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's absolutely right.
That's what we're.
And then we're going back to square one, we're going back to square one, that's not my dog, so, I mean, I get it, you guys.
Exactly. Exactly.
Here's the, he's trying to, we're trying to set parameters where you can't use that.
I get it, too. If I beat a dog, I can understand, I claiming that dog.
But there's a lot of.
But if that dog sleeping on my porch at night, and I don't know it, I'm not claiming that dog, and y'all can't say that, that, the police see that dog on my porch?
But you're gonna, okay, let's go back to the very.
And we seen it on your porch sleeping.
Okay, so, you know, y'all forgiven that little rule, the dog sleeping in your house, Leah goes, uh, you know, you're, this dog here, blah, 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 and you say it's not your dog. There's your first warning, no offense.
Yeah, first warning, then it comes to sleep on your porch the next night, what are you gonna do?
There's your first warning. Well, then you need, well, I don't know what we're gonna do, that's why we're gonna have to hire a dog.
We're gonna have a dog catcher, we're gonna become a dog catcher.
You need a dog catcher.
We're gonna be called, so we're gonna have a dog catcher that we all can call the dog catcher, and he'll come get that dog. But also, the other thing I was pointing out with Ray, is that when they give a speeding ticket.
Oh, no, 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 see, you're saying, if I know it's there, I'm asleep at night, and the dog comes to sleep on my porch, well, the cops drive by and see it on my porch, I'm asleep.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna get a ticket, a warning, because a dog's sleeping on my porch.
I think if it's.
Well, pretty sure.
I think that's, I don't think that's right.
I'm pretty sure that, if you're saying you don't have a dog, I'm pretty sure we know who these dogs are, or at least are the ones that don't have the owners at all.
I get, I get what you're saying, but here's the thing, if you, it is obvious, okay, so you're throwing a blanket on it, and it's all there, and there's a bowl there, and there's something, and it's sleeping on your porch, then that, you're, they're saying you claiming the dog, but if you're sitting, it's sleeping on your little chair that you're out there.
You can come to my house, because I've got bowls all over my porch, I've got stuff, cause we sleep, you know, we got dogs.
Oh. Well, I'm just telling you, the dog that bit me, the person said it wasn't, it, it was not their dog.
Well, I understand that. I don't, I don't believe in that neither.
That was not their dog, that she didn't want the ticket, cause it was me and Art. So me and Art decided, well, we'll go catch the dog, and, uh, she didn't wanna claim it, because it was doing some crazy things, and I think we were gonna give it to another, the one up here, and, uh, so we, we tried to catch this dog, of course the dog bit me, because I had given it snacks, and I tried to grab it, and that wasn't enough for me, it bit me, well, I let go of it, and then Art tried to shoot it with a, the tranquilizer gun, missed, so the dog ran around. It took off on us. But guess what the next day happened?
I'm, I'm. Cause we fight it down.
That same person had that dog tied up in that yard.
That's just, we got to know.
I'm not, I'm not that way, I'm not gonna tie up somebody's dog on my yard.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, you understand Art, my deal, too, cause that dog stayed at that house, we knew it was, belonged to somebody in that house, and she was like, that's not my dog.
But that's where when we have a dog catcher, if you've got a dog on your house, it's your responsibility to send that dog away. So when you feed it scraps, or you let it lay on your porch like that, you're basically saying, hey, come back and see me, I will feed you, I got a, or I got a bed for you. You're basically teaching, the Parvolo's dog, you're teaching the dog to come be a stray. So what we're saying is, we're gonna have a dog catcher, and if you have a dog that sleeps on your porch, if you show that you've been calling a dog catcher, and a dog catcher's got a porch, then you don't have a problem.
Yeah, you don't have a problem.
Well, that's fine, if you got a dog catcher.
That's what we're trying to do.
That's what I'm trying to tell you, even if, right now, we don't have a dog catcher, even if you tell Leah, that's, that's not your dog, we're, I'm gonna do something.
Or you call her up and say, there's a dog that's sitting on, and it looks like this, I, it's not my dog.
But I'm, if you're asleep at night, and you don't know the dog's coming up there, come watch it.
But the police.
But if the dog, no offense, but I know where you're going, but the dog is asleep, we don't know your, that dog's running around anyways, cause nobody's complaining about it.
Exactly.
Nobody's gonna say anything to you, okay?
I get what you're saying, though.
I get what you're saying, too, yes.
But we've got people that they pull over for speeding tickets, I didn't speed, that's not me, they give them a ticket, and they have to go for the judge to prove it. We got people that say, I didn't break into that store, they give them a ticket, and they have to go to the judge and prove it, this is no different. They say, I'm not the dog owner, they give them a ticket, they have to come before the judge and prove it.
I said, have to come before the judge, it's not my dog.
But I'm sure everybody's.
Well, I'm just saying.
I didn't do the smart thing and dispose of the dog.
So.
But you gotta be careful about that, too, if you're gonna kill the dog, but how do you know that my dog didn't get loose?
Exactly.
And he decided to shoot my dog, and then I'm gonna come back, you're the dog owner, because that dog only got loose from the dog.
And see it on my porch. Now, we're back to square one. Took out a prob, a bad problem, that's what I'm thinking.
So, I mean, we've got to draw a line.
A dog catcher's only way is gonna solve our problem.
We're, they said they're gonna hire a dog, they're gonna go find a dog catcher, we're gonna hire a dog catcher.
Yeah, I'm telling them that's a paper dog catcher.
Yes, we've got to be, we, we.
So what are, what are, what are the ones now?
No, no, what it's gonna be is on the fines, they're probably paid for this, so when they, that's why they're making it to where you have to pay more than twenty dollars a month, so that would be it, and then we would hire someone that's not gonna be an employee of the state.
You know how many people gonna go to jail because they can't afford five hundred dollars?
And they need to get rid of the dog.
Someone's got the dog, you know, get, be better.
Yeah, that's wrong when you go back and get your dog, and the other thing is, is that we're gonna charge them to put them in the kennel, so they're gonna pay a jail fee for their dog to be in there for three days, so, right now, they're paying, right now, they're paying the fines and paying them their payments, but they're still letting their dogs out, because they don't care.
Cause there's no consequence.
It's like they, they don't care if they go to jail.
Y'all will be in for some of the rabies and the city tagging them.
I believe here, most of my life, and it's always been like that.
Right.
So they'll all be tagged, so they don't have my dog.
All my dog, your tag.
Yeah.
Well, they're tagged, they're tagged, but they, they haven't had a rabies thing in a while.
But my dog, your dog have.
So what, uh, we need to get back up here, I guess, you guys, so. Okay, go ahead. The discussion is fifty percent of the.
That you're telling Sharon.
No, I see, I see, it's like, I, I know people saying, well, you know, I shoot them and stuff, are people allowed to shoot in the city?
Actually, there is an ordinance, and it's a law, that you discharge a firearm, they can be called down there and have you handcuffed in the wreck before you're discharging the firearm.
Yeah, and see, my house is a single wall house.
Yeah, my dog.
It's just a single wall house, if anybody shoots, he go right.
And there's an open law, you can carry it, open gun carry now. If you feel threatened in your property, you can't dispose of it.
Yeah.
My child, or you, or something, that's the only way out.
But then you got the people, like, if you can't shoot a gun, and I'm not gonna pull a gun out, cause I would be afraid it would ricochet off the rock, I just threw the dog and come back and hit me.
Are you paying that, too?
Now, it was scary to go.
That's why they have training.
Got, good off, he could get some.
So we're seeing fifty percent?
But I can't.
I understand that, you should have to be a threatening in your yard, I understand that, come on, I'm not gonna feel threatened in my yard.
Yeah.
I'm not.
I make the motion, we increase the payment by at least fifty percent.
By fifty percent? No, five hundred dollars.
No, payment arrangement.
Oh, payment arrangement, okay.
Payment arrangement.
Sorry. A second.
Higbee?
Yes.
Burton?
Well, I got something to say on it.
Why, why?
I've got something to say on it, I couldn't get in on the other part. They cannot make the decision, now, the only thing they can do now, is collect the whole payment, if they want off, they cannot, they're not a judge, and if they want payment, then they have to go through the judge.
But that's not how the city has been approving it.
No.
The city approved it.
That's the way that it's supposed to be, though.
Five, within the last five years, no, no.
I, I've, I've, I've gotten speeding tickets, and I've called, uh, small towns and somebody, I can't make the full payment, but I don't wanna go to court,
In any town. Spiro, Stigler?
We do, with our account.
Can I pay on it, and the person who are right top behind the desk will say, yes, you can make this, well, you know, what are you talking about, what do you need?
Coca-Cola.
Or they'll say, you need to pay half now, and then, when, can you pay another half? No, they do that.
The court clerk, the court clerk, you're not talking about the city making decisions, but the court clerk can make that decision to accept payments.
Not us.
Oh, uh, well, then y'all need, then, the police can't make arrangements for payments, but the court clerk can, so the court clerk needs to be told not to be making any payments with the fifty percent.
Yeah, the fifty percent.
So they have to pay at least fifty percent?
To set up payments without going before judge.
And it, and it won't be no fifty percent, say the, say five hundred, they pay two fifty, and then twenty dollars a month, that'd be.
They need to get it paid off within, how many months?
Uh, three months.
Three months.
Three months is good, three months. Three months is good, three months.
But you divide it in three months, and now do your monthly, three months.
Yeah, fifty percent plus three months left on balance.
Okay, so we need to write this.
That goes back down to number nine on that.
Huh?
That goes on number nine?
No, it's on number ten.
Number ten.
Acceptable payments arrangements.
But we didn't do number nine, did we?
Yeah, y'all left the five hundred dollars.
Okay, sorry. So go ahead and say it, Jeff, what we need to do.
And then somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna talk to the judge and tell him how the town feels.
Jeff's already did, and.
I'll abstain for now.
You have a second? You abstain? Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes. It's not that I'm not for it, it's, it's, I wanna make sure that it's legal.
I mean, I got a ticket in Spiro, I don't take a Spiro, I'll take a sport coffee, and I said, hey, I don't wanna go to court, can I make payments? And I set up payments for thirty dollars a month with the court clerk.
And I did it for Cola also.
And she did it for.
I did it through here, I got speeding ticket here one day.
I did it in California.
About a hundred and eighty bucks.
I mean, even California does it.
As long as the court clerk.
Okay.
But she is the court.
All right, number eleven, discuss about to purchase a backpack blower, a sixteen inch chainsaw, and a handheld blower, for a total cost of one thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars ninety-six cents for the fire department. I was, I was informed that the next fire season is predicted to be worse than last season, and this equipment that need, that they're requesting to be purchased, uh, the chainsaw is, needs to be replaced with the one it to have, and other ones, the, the backpack blowers are to assist with the, uh, debris.
Also, it's just blowing air, it's not blowing any, uh, things out, okay, I was gonna ask.
All, all them backpack blowers, the hand blower is, is when we go down to the, to make a break, a fire break. And we blow the leaves and stuff like that back from, keep that fire from.
That makes sense, I'm just curious.
And then our chainsaw, we got a chainsaw, but it has not been used, and it is, is trash.
It's like twenty years old.
Better.
Twenty years plus.
Yeah, it's probably twenty plus years old.
So I vote that we approve this.
Who first at Tammy?
Yeah.
Higbee?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick? Oh, sorry.
Number twelve, discuss about to purchase a steering cylinder for the backhoe, it costs approximately six hundred dollars.
Is this the new backhoe?
No, that's track hoe.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the backhoe that we replaced, and we thought we could fix it, and they welded it, or whatever the heck that he went down there and did. What was that, Jeff, was this part of the problem?
The, it's mounted up to the frame by four bolts, and two of the bolts on one side broke, and the whole cylinder come loose, so we can't, can't steer it.
It's not the hydraulic part though, right, not the thing that they fixed for, that's seventy-eight dollars?
No.
Okay.
Well, it's the same unit, but it's, the way it's mounted to the frame on the tractor, the, it's just cast, uh, metal, and it, it eventually just.
Well, anyway, this, this quote here comes from Stigler Mill. Okay, so it's staying in-house, while in town or in county.
That's just for the price of the cylinder, no, you can't put it on.
No, 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 that's not the, Rubens cost, no.
Is that to reinforce it so it'll sit better?
No, that's a new thing, it, it, it's down, it's broke, the backhoe is broke down. It's down, can't do nothing with it. So I say, go ahead and do this, because that's the only thing we can do is fix it.
You can fix it.
It'll fix it.
It's magnets, it'll be fixed. I'll see.
Higbee?
Yeah.
Burton?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Starsman?
Yes.
McCormick?
Thirteen new business. Fourteen old business.
Is this, I've seen you talk about.
Yes.
If you're new business.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry, that's all right, that's all right. My name is Frank Phillips, I'm with the Public Service Department of Oklahoma, I'm the External Affairs Manager. I'm really here tonight, not to ask you to take any action, but just to talk about the renewal of the P S O franchise. It's required by every, every twenty-five years, and we kind of, the citizens asking if they wanna choose to renew their franchise with P S O. And so what I've got for you tonight, and I'll just leave some of it, but just some of the information, it's, it's not exclusive franchise, they include someone else from coming in and putting, if they wanted to spend the money to put an electric system in, someone else could, there's no exclusivity to that. Uh, we collect, and you're probably familiar with it, the franchise fee for the past twelve months has been, uh, right at twelve thousand dollars, that we collect, and we met the city. You also save eighteen thousand dollars annually on street lighting, because of having a franchise with P S O. And in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be coming through and changing all of our municipal street lights to L E D lights. So instead of seeing the yellow sodium vapors that you've got out there now, we're gonna be seeing high pressure, I mean, you'll be seeing the, uh, L E D lights. So it'll be a lot brighter, a lot lighter, cleaner, uh, it's, it's a nicer light, I don't know if you've been through Stigler, we changed all theirs out, we're just going through all of our P S O territory and changing those out.
They just done it up on the city, too.
They, they, yeah, they're, they're, they're nice, I mean.
Now, is that the entire town, or his main street?
The entire town, all of, all the municipal street lights that you all pay for will be changed to L E D lights.
So the private person, because I have one that's on mine, and I have it the same as theirs, would that be changed as well?
At some point, we're, right now, we're doing the municipal street lighting, and then we'll finish that through all of Oklahoma, because we've got Tulsa, we've covered a lot of that. Uh, a couple of other things that when it talks about the, the financial aspects of it, uh, you know, we, you also receive fourteen thousand dollars in sales tax. Uh, we pay Haskell County a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in, in, uh, property tax, and a hundred and three thousand in sales tax, so we continue to do that. So we're gonna change all the lights out to L E Ds. What happens every twenty-five years is, we go, and you all use the county election board, so we go through Haskell County and talk to, to them, and they conduct the election. If it, if we're the only issue on the ballot, we pay for the cost of the franchise, the whole election, including legal applications, we provide all the documents. If there's another issue on there, they just bill us for the ballots, if there was already another election on there, but otherwise, if it's just us, we pay for it, so you all aren't out of any expense for, for that. Uh, I'll leave this information with you, but we'll also provide the documents, if the ordinance resolutions, special election proclamation notice, and also, uh, eventually the acceptance of franchise. And we'll also provide the language that goes on the agenda, so you don't have to decide how that goes. Uh, there's, there's the marijuana election, I think in March, uh, April, there's something else, and so May would be the time we would be targeting to have the franchise renewed. That would require the next council meeting to take action on all of the documents. Have any questions, I, as long as it's not about dogs, I don't know what I can come up with.
I've got one for you.
Yes, sir?
Okay, on our, we had Christmas lights, that, we got two poles knocked down up here in Tampa, okay, when they replaced those poles. The, four end down, the drops that come down, the electric lines, those was never hooked up, and I've talked to the mayor, and the other guy. And, uh, who, who does it? I mean, uh, we went all through Christmas without the lights on this year, and we've got old timers coming up the first week in May, and that's only about three months. And so, they use those drops to run their camp, uh, different things, so well, that's something that needs to be, should've been already taken care of, but not.
Were they your drops?
Yeah, they, yeah, they worked out every year.
No, are they ours, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Are they our drops, or that's by them, or is it the P S O side, I don't know.
But yet, we don't have a drop to provide those, I mean, you're probably hooking in the streetlight service somewhere.
I got, I think so, I think that's where I'm at.
So, we just need to talk to the service manager, see what we can do about getting those.
Jeff knows, Jeff asked us about those.
See, they, they worked until they, they've knocked this pole down, and they've got two down, replaced them.
Jeff, did you talk to the service man that's right here?
And he was helping back.
He never called you back?
Hasn't, and May, that'll be a, could be a critical, uh, if the people has got different things to do, uh, that run their vendors and.
That's okay, they're trying.
We'll just look, I mean, again, if it's, if it's your, your drops, then we'd have to see what we can do about that, because there's, there's other places where they have attachments on them that belong to them.
Well, what I'm understanding, that, that the hooking up is up here from, they hook it up when they put the e-poles up.
I'll just have to have him look, I'll have our service man look.
Did he leave yet?
Okay.
Did he stay a couple days?
No, I didn't know that.
She's gonna stay at mom's.
For, in May, that will be, could, it could be where you have, uh, old timers there and on, it's a big day in Georgia, when these streets are full.
Just have to ask, because if they got knocked down and were damaged, and I don't know if the, if the wire was bad, I don't know.
Well, I'll talk to him.
We'll have to.
Okay.
What we should've thought about was, uh.
I mean, it's something we need to address before, Michael.
You have any other questions?
Four, four, five hundred people in town tonight.
We've also got some other programs, there's weatherization that's available, I don't know if any of y'all taking opportunity to use that now? But if you, for your home weatherization, you can get free weatherization, if you make less than a certain amount of money, if the house is a certain size.
Thank you for coming, Maple, we can get back out in our yard one of these days. I worry about you over there working on your garden.
Insulation, weatherization, weather stripping, and it's open to customers, and I can lease some of those brochures. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
You'll be getting back on, with the city.
I'll talk to the mayor, and we'll have some sort of looking for you.
Yeah, that's what we're waiting on.
We have to wait until the, the quarter or so, so we got to.
Yeah, we're, I'm gonna, the old top. Y'all got, y'all got a recorder?
I jammed it. I just wanna make sure I'm hearing everything.
Well, actually, we have it recorded. I mean, no, I mean, truthfully, I mean, it is recorded, just work, fight and record.
Recorded, oh.
Yeah. We post it, we post it, I guess, I wanna watch it.
I'll watch last month's, and y'all look great.
Really?
Even better than first.
I don't wanna look, I don't wanna, my mouth goes sometimes.
I'm afraid to look at it, it's bad.
I'm naked like me, so I'm glad, you got, glad you saw it, I wasn't in it.
Thanks to the Stigler News Center.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna trade places with dogs, I don't know. Yeah.
Oh, which is something bubbly over there that we.
Last. I've never been here, I wonder how long my lady was like.
No, you don't know, you've never been here either.
I woke up at two and three in the morning, and there'd be dogs on my back porch, uh, tearing into my trash, and I don't even put food in the trash. And, uh, and then you had to get up and chase them out, in the, early morning. But now I've got home problems. Not dog problems, I got home problems.
Sharon, you don't have a key to the water department?
Yeah, they're in my.
You what?
I'm wanting, I'm wanting the garden, but I can't handle garden, as long as they got a house. No, no, neighbors has got houses, they shouldn't run around.
I'll tell you later, but everybody needs to make a key and give it to Sharon, because that's part of a, of a deal that she's taken out, because she's a treasurer.
I never got a key to that one horse there, when lots of tanks.
She'll take key to every one of these.
I thought we told them not to do that.
Huh?
Especially for that.
I thought we told them not to do that.
At that time, yes, because we did want somebody else back in there, but if you, but Cheryl said it.
She needed a key.
I'll tell you later.
Okay.
On top, brother.
I don't know, can you not do with the cell phone? Hey, you guys?
We should have another town's cell phone.
Where did he go?
He's out there looking for a key.
It's been a lot, a lot of work, it's really overwhelming, our house, we have so many puppies and crazy.
See, I've heard, uh.
I think we don't have work out, because he's only here to sit. Uh, you don't answer somebody, because we don't need them, none of us. I'm, I'm, it's right there, but I don't, someone's missing a box.
Can we not?
No, not on my phone, not on the officer's.
Well, it's not.
Or Sharon. Sharon or somebody's stuff. Not yours either.
Sharon, can you record your phone?
They said, very long, but I mean, we should be able to finish that, please. Is there any way you can send us a copy of that?
Uh, I can ask, ask him. I, I don't have anything to do with it, but I can ask with.
Oh, no, no, she got in. Mm-hmm.
Connect up to where it wasn't so much about animals anymore, so we'll go down on our own. Yes, it's exhausting, and, but. That's what, like, I hope the litter of.
Maybe I'll run in peace and get bailed out.
And then the others, like, I have about that much. I sent them to, and my partner has the other four that came in litter, we kinda have to split them up when they're puppies, because they're a lot more than they're. Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, you know, it's, it's like. Right now, so we, yeah, and I always let one ten out at times, so like, I'm trying to stretch up, like, you know, so, I mean, it's just, it's a lot of work right now, it's, I work at home. I have five of my own dogs, personal dogs. Yeah.
We hear the poles are replaced. And you drop towards this.
With all those, those are up there.
Everyone of mine always have each other's. So you have.
They get pulled down, and they.
Fire got poured down.
Oh, well, uh, yeah, uh, they need to put those things, uh, the, 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 but these are old, that's here, going in there. But what I'm asking is, they're still.
Oh.
They still, yeah, they still got the drops on.
No, although they do, I love the season, but they work. Yeah, see if she can send them to replace them.
All right, yes, sir.
I can't find, I can't record it.
Yeah.
Hi, Sharon, are you gonna see if she'll send us a copy of it?
Uh, all right, number fourteen, old business. Now, we still got new business.
Oh, that's the business? We do new business with them. Uh, have you got any new business?
Yeah.
There's new business, yeah.
Uh, I got a trailer house down here at the end of Eighth Street. My niece lived in it, she had the water shut off six months ago. Something like that. Okay, y'all come and shut the water off, but it froze the other night, busted, water's come shooting down in my trailer house, the water was never shut off right.
Can I just stop you right here? When you had that conversation with him?
Yep.
And you said that you were gonna bring your lawyer?
If I have to.
They wouldn't, that, when that happened, we went to our lawyers. Or our lawyer, so basically, we are lawyered up, because you threatened us with our lawyer, or with your lawyer.
No, I didn't threaten you, I said, do I need to bring my lawyer?
Okay, well, you said you're gonna bring your lawyer up here?
No, that's not what I said.
Okay.
I said, do I need to bring my lawyer?
Okay, all right, I, I didn't hear your conversation, you might, you know, I'm just letting you know, we called our lawyer.
That's fine, if that's what I need to do, that's fine, that's what I'm, that's what I'm up here for.
Okay.
Because it's not my fault that y'all can't shut the water off right.
Okay.
And it ruined my trailer house.
I, I know.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't wanna get, I'm just letting you know, we're, we're scanning now.
That's fine, I just don't know what, what's gonna happen, do I need to get a lawyer?
I don't know, I mean, you might wanna talk to our lawyer, I don't know if she'll talk to him, but the only thing I know is that when you said that, that was.
When I said what? You're putting words in my mouth. It was never shut off.
They said there was a faulty valve, and that there was three other.
Who said that?
The water guy.
The water.
Who's the water guy?
Your water guy.
Your water guy is.
Yeah. Like, it's never reported that back to me. Oh, I'm not on the water department, you need to talk to him.
Let's talk to Chuck, that's what was said.
I said something about faulty, faulty valve.
And that the valves had been ordered, and they haven't come in, and there was three other valves that were like that, so what was happening? When the water, they thought the water was being shut off, apparently, it wasn't being shut off.
It was shut off a lot, but it didn't go through the valve.
It wasn't locked. Yes.
Like I said, there's three other places, just like it, three others, that had faulty valves.
But I was not aware that it had, it was a faulty valve, it wasn't brought to my attention.
But that will be taken care of here after this meeting. For not being notified. I mean, I'm sorry, but you know what I'm saying, right?
I mean.
So go ahead, uh, man, I don't, can you just wait just, because we need to talk to our lawyer again?
That's fine.
I mean, because she's the one that's advising us not to talk, because of whatever the remark got.
Well, the city.
The remark wasn't that, I can, I can.
Who has insurance for things like this?
Or if I'd have said that, my lawyer would be dead.
Yeah, 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 I get it, I get it.
I did not say that.
But you understand, when we were talking, it was like, my lawyer's a woo.
I did not say that.
Yeah, okay.
Somebody's putting words in my mouth.
No, I am not, I'm just saying that I, I said, that's what I heard, and I apologize to you, but.
That's fine, I'm not, I'm not trying to threaten the town, I just wanna know what I need to, what kinda action I need to take.
Okay.
Because it's not my fault, y'all ruined my trailer house, I mean, if we have to get estimates, a insurance thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's a leaky water valve on us, I don't blame you guys, okay, I'm just.
Okay, no, I don't wanna bring my lawyer into it.
Yes, yes.
I just want, I, I just want my trailer, you know?
But that was the one we got to.
If we do, if we do go through lawyer, they're gonna tow my trailer, it's gonna cost y'all a lot more than just not fixing up.
And how did you find out, Jeff? How did you find out that there was leaky thing down there?
I didn't.
I thought you said that, that's what you heard, that it was.
No, somebody, no, that's.
No, somebody, no, that's what each said.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's what they said, the lawyer said.
Water running out of my house.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I heard your water was running out and you had icicles, yeah.
I mean, we got, we got video of it.
Yeah. I, I, I was questioning that.
No, they said, no, they said.
Busted till it flooded the whole place.
Right. My problem right now is why it didn't get reported back to us, what, what Mike had said. That's what my part is, because it makes me feel like, oh, because I'm sitting here saying, lawyered up.
That were leaking. One's over at the housing, and the other one's up the school. I wasn't aware that y'all had, had. Well, we weren't either until it happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we thought the water.
We thought the water was shut off. It split my toilet.
And Alexa, Alexa did shut it off.
Yes, she did.
I know, I know it's off.
Yeah.
We have.
She definitely did. This was not, nothing on her. She done her job.
Yeah.
Yeah, she finally got shut off.
No, no, we should have got one.
When they turned it off, when you turned it off, we can call them.
Yeah, back in the summer in June, when it was raining.
Yeah, when it was back in summer, when they shut it off.
Yeah.
Like I said, let, let me, the joy thing, because, and why?
Well, I'm just here to say, you know, I'm a, I'm a carpenter. I can fix my floor. All I need is the materials.
Yeah.
It won't cost you no labor. I just want my floor, I just want my tray fixed. That's all I care about.
And the plumbing and the toilets.
Well, the toilet, yeah. It split my toilet, I expect, you know.
The carpets all run.
Carpet, everything run, from the floor up, floor down. I mean. It just run down each tier and.
Run to the neighbors.
Run into the neighbor joint.
Oh, boy. I know.
I mean, if, if I do, it's going to cost y'all way less than if I have two estimates come in, and I'm telling you, it's going to be way higher. Way higher. Because you're going to have water tear out the walls because of the water damage. I don't care about the walls. The walls ain't nothing to me. It's my floor. I've got a walk on it. I can, I can re, I can, I can fix my walls when I, when I do my floor. That's no problem. Like I said, I'm a carpenter. I've been carpenter my whole life. I just need my floors fixed. That's all I'm asking.
I'm just asking, let me.
That's fine.
Let me do some investigation on this end and Joy, since, you know, what we're talking about. I mean, because we went straight to Joy. I mean, that's the cover of us.
I'd just like to know if y'all plan on getting a lawyer, then I need to get one.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, it's not so much that we're not getting a lawyer, that Joy is here twenty-four seven for us.
Yes.
And for the, for everybody out here, so when someone says something, or e- even if it probably wasn't, you did, did, didn't say that, or said it, or whatever, we're still going to go to Joy.
That's fine.
To make it sure we knew what to do as a city. Because it's these guys' money too, you know what I'm saying?
I got you. It's my money too. You got to realize, I live in this town too.
But you got to understand that we didn't know nothing about what Mike had said. We just assumed that the water was on somehow, okay? You understand? Okay.
Yeah, they insured.
I got you.
I didn't you.
That's fine.
I mean, no offense, I mean, that's the word. But since Mike is saying that. Oh, that's good. I'm not mad at you guys, I'm just mad because it should have been reported to us, like we want. But okay, give us some time.
No problem.
Thank you.
I probably won't be here. You got Jeff? Jeff, you can talk to Jeff or come up here, Sharon can get her. Right?
I guess whenever they're talking to Joy.
But we'll let him know.
Sometime next week, following weeks, I mean, should I have at least when I need to check in?
Oh, no, uh. Try to get hold of Joy.
Or can you just call me when y'all find out something?
We'll try to get hold of Joy Monday, or what's the, you're probably trying to get hold of her tomorrow, and then we're going to, this, Mike's been sick for the last couple of days. You need to call Mike tomorrow.
No, Monday is a holiday.
Is Monday a holiday? Well, give me to Tuesday or whatever.
Monday is a holiday.
Well, I give you all week, I don't care. I just know.
We need to find out what the problem, what, what it is.
I forgot it is a holiday, wasn't it?
All right, number fourteen, old business.
Sorry. Uh, Mike, you have something, um, I asked, I brought up a couple of months ago about holes in front of the Illinois market shop. They're getting harder, and it's, people are complaining about, they're running probably getting worse, but if, if you could get it, I think I appreciate it. It's actually in the street right in front. It looks like it's been repaired before. It just needs to be, you know how it is. It's just getting worse. I think it's also across the street in front of, beside the church as well. I know he was working on some roads when the backhoe went down. He was fixing. Absolutely, at the back. Because we've been hauler, but you got to do that, that asphalt when it's warm, because it's a cold mix. Right, I get what you're saying, but at the same time, I. It's been there a long time, I know. I'm just. Don't.
All right, number fifteen, adjourned.
Or whatever, there we.
Hackett B.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Uh, moving on to K D W A, City Kyoto, regular meeting, June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at seven thirty-five. Call order, call roll.
Hackett B.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number three, discuss vote to approve all Bennett for December twenty twenty-two.
Motion approve them? I'll second.
Hackett B.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number four, discuss vote to approve all December twenty twenty-two bills for water pump.
I make a motion, pound, second.
Hackett B.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number five, discuss vote to approve all December twenty twenty-two bills for sewer pump.
I make a motion, pound. Second.
Hackett B.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number six, review and approve change order number one for void construction for the replanned application improvements project. It's a, a different one. This is a draft letter that, uh. They put together.
It's the land name?
It's from D U Q.
It's, what's this one about, Jeff? On this, what application are we trying to do and approve of the project? Can you let me know what you guys are even talking about?
Where's the land?
Where's this at? What's this for?
It's the land app rate that's out here for, uh.
The bishop project.
Bishop project, that's what I'm talking about.
Um, so this is the, this is the pipe.
Yeah, but it, it come off the.
Yeah, 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 that's what he's, okay.
So. Let's see. We're, uh. They're doing something with this amount. It's changed. You know, with what's going on. But we do have the funds for it, because we had extra money for that, I'll take that. Right, you guys? I'm not lying about them. So something has come up.
And it's, oh, it's a price, it's price, pipe price increase.
Yeah.
So when he bitted on it, it was one price, and now it's this price, so he's adjusting his bill. And he's telling us that, hey, I can't do it for that price, because it's been this long, on this deal.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, close everything.
Which is an increase of thirty-five hundred dollars already on the, the money. That costs us. We have extra money.
Which, oh, oh, we didn't approve it, don't we?
When they.
I make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, my turn too.
I'll second.
Hackett B.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number seven, discuss vote to purchase a steering cylinder for backhoe.
Same as the other.
Same as same.
Thank you.
Do I still need to call y'all's names?
I would.
Hackett B.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Number eight, new business. Number nine, old business. Number ten, adjourned.
Hackett B.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Starsman.
Yes.
McCormick.